Okay. Okay, so we're gonna start with the approval of the consent agenda. Okay. Approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion? Dodge, second. Cynthia, discussion? All in favor? Okay, consent agenda. This is all in consent agenda. All right, let me just say tonight, we're not gonna have, I'm sorry, I should've said this earlier. Normally at our meetings, we do have comments from the board and comments from the superintendent, but because this is just a brief meeting, we're not gonna have those tonight unless there was anything anyone wanted to contribute or anything, were we okay to go for it? Okay, just wanted to just give everyone the opportunity in case they did want to. Okay, business of the board. This is the second reading of policy. We are not gonna go ahead and read the policy tonight. There are two policies regarding computer network for education. They are policy numbers 4526 and 4526R. They are on our district website for review. This is the second reading, so I just urge, we're not gonna vote on this tonight, but anyone who would like to take a look at that and any comments or feedback they'd like to give, please do so. Number two, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Westchester Therapy Solutions for therapy services for the 2017-18 school year at rates as per the attached rate sheet, not to exceed $175,000. 2016-17 was $108,807. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion?
Just a quick question on it. So I noticed, is this just an allotment we're hiring? Did we have an increase in students or expected?
Good question, Rob. So we've had a relationship with Westchester Therapy Solutions for quite some time. They provide OT, PT, speech services, and basically, yes, there is an increase in students. We anticipate three additional non-resident special education tuition students. Some of the cost, and maybe not all, it could be also for some TUCO students, but that increase will be billed back to their home district. I think we have one from Scarsdale, one from Pleasantville, and I believe another one from Yonkers. So if the services are needed, we do bill back, but it goes through us. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Approve an agreement, resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Dr. Benner Strober for psychological and educational assessments for the 2017-18 school year at a rate of $260 an hour, not to exceed $15,000. Any discussion? All in favor?
Motion.
Motion. I'm sorry. Is there, do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, any discussion? All in favor? Too much sun this summer. Okay. Number four, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with T. Toles Consulting for Special Education Transition and Placement Services for the period starting July 6, 2017 through June 30, 2018, at a rate of $500 a day, not to exceed 36 days or $18,000. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion? Carl, did you wanna just talk about this a little? Because I know that this is something we started at the end of last year.
Sure. Mr. Joseph Toles actually started with us. He did a leave replacement for one of our high school guidance counselors last year. In becoming familiar with Mr. Toles and his expertise, we learned that he had a particular expertise and experience with post-secondary planning for special education students. He understood it's a complex world beyond school as far as accessing services and job coaching and housing and many other things, and that process needs to start actually three or four years prior to graduation. So Mr. Toles has been working with our high school students and even consulting with some middle school families to help guide them and navigate this complex process so when our students do graduate, they are able to receive those services available. So I think it's money well spent, it's been well received by the parents, and our staff is also learning from him. He did some work, you see, the amount is less. He worked for us just a little bit in the spring, and we'd like to see him continue that work.
Okay, great. All in favor? Personnel, appoint a leave replacement. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Wendellin Rosso to a 10-month leave replacement at the position of reading teacher at William E. Cottle effective September 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education on Step 2 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Two, appoint a-
Now, Ms. Rosso is, I see a number of people-
Oh, it's Ms. Rosso here.
She's here, and we could do, it's up to you all at the end.
At the end, we'll have everyone come up.
We'll meet everyone just quickly, okay.
Number two, appoint a leave replacement. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Catherine Petty to a six-week leave replacement at the position of speech and language teacher at the Tuckahoe Middle School, Tuckahoe High School, effective September 1, 2017 through October 18, 2017, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education on Step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Three, appoint a leave replacement. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Patricia Harrington-Lillis to a seven-week leave replacement at the position of elementary teacher at William E. Cottle effective September 1, 2017 through October 20, 2017, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education on Step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Number five, appoint, appoint a teacher, resolved on the recommendation of-
Special education.
Okay, four, appoint a special education teacher, I'm sorry. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Jill Quaterero to a four-year probationary appointment as a teacher of special education in the special education tenure area commencing September 1, 2017 and ending August 31, 2021, contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of Educational Law Sections 3012, 3012(c) and/or 3012(d) on Step 3 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Quaterero, Quaterero holds permanent special education certification. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Cynthia, discussion? All in favor? I did wanna say, Carl, that all the appointments that we have tonight are all accounted for in our budget for this coming year. There's nothing that was unplanned for. This is all planned out.
Well, yes, the full-time probationary positions are all planned for. The leave replacements were unexpected, of course, and you do have a number of leaves. Some we knew about, maternity leave, but there were some unexpected leaves that we needed to fill.
Okay. Number five, appoint point aid teacher, resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Pahaya Jones to a temporary point aid appointment as a teacher of Spanish commencing September 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018 on Step 4 MA prorated of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Jones holds a professional Spanish 7 through 12 certification. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Number six, appoint a teacher, resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Regina David to a three-year probationary appointment as a teacher of elementary in the elementary tenure area commencing September 1, 2017 and ending August 31, 2020, contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of Educational Law Sections 3012, 3012(c) and/or 3012(d) on Step 2 MA of the TTA schedule. Ms. David holds professional certification in childhood education 1 through 6. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Cynthia, discussion? All in favor? Number seven. Appoint a point, point 6.3 teacher. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Jason Simone to a temporary point 6.3 appointment as a teacher of health and physical education commencing September 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018 on Step 1 MA prorated of the TTA salary schedule. Mr. Simone holds initial health and physical education certifications. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Eight, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Lisa DeSimone as a teaching assistant effective September 1, 2017. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Nine, appoint a special education teacher. Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Lisa DeSimone to a four-year probationary appointment as a teacher of special education in the special education tenure area commencing September 1, 2017 and ending August 31, 2021, contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of Education Law Sections 3012, 3012(c) and/or 3012(d) on Step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Simone holds initial certifications in students with disabilities. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, all in favor?
Just a question.
I'm sorry.
Just, we've had a lot of discussion tonight about special ed and changes. Have we seen a significant change in enrollment or in our administration in that area? That seems, you know, we're bringing people in, or is it the growth, or a little bit of both?
Little bit of both. We had one resignation, and we have definitely two positions, and they're outlined. If you open up each memo, it'll explain, there are two new sections of classes opened up at the elementary school. So our ABA program, for example, which was a K-1 program last year, now we're adding a 2, 3, and we have preschool kids coming in, and that is one of the programs where we've accepted some tuition students. So the programs are growing, the kids are moving up, and we're supporting them moving forward.
So then you probably foresee that, I guess, going into grades 4 or 5, who would have a similar?
Exactly. Eventually, maybe not every year, but that program will continue to grow with the students. It's a program that didn't exist before. So it's something new. We had students placed out initially, we brought them back, and now you're seeing them, you know, as they grow older, we're supporting them and adding classes.
Thank you.
All in favor? Ten, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Valerie Crody as a teacher assistant effective August 15, 2017. Motion? Cynthia, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Eleven, appoint a leave replacement. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Valerie Crody to a four-month leave replacement at the position of elementary teacher at William E. Cottle effective September 1, 2017 through December 22, 2017, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education on Step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Motion? Cynthia, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Twelve, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Danielle Mariano as a teacher aide effective September 1, 2017. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Thirteen, appointed teacher, I'm sorry, a teaching assistant. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Danielle Mariano to a probationary appointment effective September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2021, as a teaching assistant at the William E. Cottle School on Step 6 of the CSEA salary schedule. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Cynthia. Discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor? Fourteen, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Robert Lepore as teacher aide effective September 1, 2017. Motion? Cynthia, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Fifteen, appointed teaching assistant. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Robert Lepore to a probationary appointment effective September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2021, as a teaching assistant at the William E. Cottle School on Step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule. Motion? Rob, second. Cynthia, discussion? All in favor? Sixteen, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Lorraine Colasacco as a teacher aide effective September 1, 2017. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Rob? It's okay. Eighteen, I'm sorry, seventeen. Appointed teaching assistant. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Lorraine Colasacco to a probationary appointment effective September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2021, as a teaching assistant at William E. Cottle School on Step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Eighteen, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Jennifer DeFabia as teacher aide effective September 1, 2017. Is motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Twenty, appointed teaching assistant. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools- Um... Oh, so it was eighteen, the resignation of Jennifer DeFabia? Okay, I'm sorry. Nineteen. Resolved on, appointed teaching assistant. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Jennifer DeFabia to a probationary appointment effective September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2021, as a teaching assistant at William E. Cottle School on Step 3 of the CSEA salary schedule. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion?
I didn't know if we wanted to, because a lot of these, if people understand, because there's a lot of people resigning as teachers aides and then accepting different positions, so I didn't know if we wanted to mention anything about that.
Sure. Yeah, I think it's certainly worth mentioning, and I apologize, it's a little repetitive. So we had a number of aides working in our special education programs that we have been training. We have a partnership, earlier at the reorg meeting, we approved a partnership, for example, with the Carbone Clinic. And they come in several times per year, they train our entire staff, the teachers as well as the TAs and the specialists. So for the ABA programs in particular, there were four teaching assistants that we were hiring this evening. Many of, well, I'm sorry, I think all but one of those people have been promoted from within. So they were aides, working in the classroom, working one-to-one with students, discreet trial, and they've learned all those techniques and have done really well. And they've also demonstrated, you know, these people, from what I hear from the teacher as well as Dr. McDonald, is that they've demonstrated a real passion and motivation for working with our children with disabilities. And that is why they have been recommended for promotions. But they need to resign before they can accept the new position.
Yeah, no, I just wasn't sure if out there everybody understood, it's like, it's-
No, I think-
Then we don't replace the aide. So they just move up. It's really, it's almost title and, I guess, pay, but there's no replacement of the aide.
Next week, we may be bringing some aides to the board, and if not, because these have now created some vacancies. So if not on the 28th, then in early September, we may need to do a few more aide appointments to fill some of the vacancies.
Are they moving into, let's say, the ABA class that you created, any of them? Is that what's happening? They're moving from one class to another?
Exactly, yes.
Right, and the mandates by the state are for the specific classes? They may need two teaching assistants and one aide, or?
Exactly. The ratio, as Michelle just explained, it's an 8:1, 2 special class. That means up to eight students, one teacher, two teaching assistants required by law. So each one has two, and then we have a 12:1, 1. There are two 12:1, 1 teachers. One of those teachers has accepted a leave replacement. She's a certified teacher, Valerie Karate. So for example, that created a TA vacancy. So that's in a 12:1, 1 class, 12 students, one teacher, one TA.
Okay. All in favor? Twenty, appointed teaching assistant. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Angela Acapiti to a probationary appointment effective September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2021, as a teaching assistant at William E. Cottle School on Step 2 of the CSEA salary schedule. Motion? Rob, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion? All in favor? Twenty-one, appointed teaching assistant. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Benjamin Faber to probationary appointment effective September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2021, as a teaching assistant at TMS on Step 2 of the CSEA salary schedule. Motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Twenty-two, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Noreen Gaston, effective August 21, 2017. Motion? Dodge, second. Cynthia. Discussion? All in favor? Twenty-three, appoint stipends. Resolved to approve the following stipends for the 2017-18 school year. Rita Genteel, varsity club co-advisor, $1,417. Lori Parada, varsity club co-advisor, $1,417. Motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Okay, so now we're gonna adjourn the meeting? Okay, so we're gonna adjourn a meeting? Is there, okay, before we adjourn, let's just congratulate everyone. Some are here, some are not here. We just recently hired interim principal at Cottle, and in interviewing him, he said something that I thought was really worthy of repeating, in that when you hire into your school, you're hiring into your family. So I wanna welcome you into our Tuckahoe family here and wish you the very best of luck in the year ahead and your time with us, and thank you for being here tonight. So if you wanna come forward and we'll-
Shake hands, yes? Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you. See, and I still got the name on it. Congratulations. Jason, congratulations. Good luck to you. Very, very good luck to you. Best of luck to you. Nice to meet you. Good luck to you.
Okay, so now a motion to adjourn our special meeting?
I just have one question, though, in regards to just why, with the Spanish teacher, there was a point something position. Why is it not a full-time position? I'm curious.
That, that's, those are all the classes that we need. So we just simply, a secondary teacher by contract teaches five classes, only four are needed at this time. So we looked for ways, it is always our desire or motivation to try to create full-time positions, but if we simply don't have the need, then we can't.
Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, all in favor? Okay, we are now going to have a presentation on our capital project. I believe Walter is here. Okay, wonderful. So do we wanna give a little update as to where we are?
Sure, sure. And I guess maybe we should say to our new employees, you know, you're certainly welcome to stay, but I don't want you to feel obligated to stay. We have an interesting presentation, I promise you that, but the board has some business, and we're trying to finalize a plan for a very exciting capital project, so you're welcome to join us, but we won't be offended if you wanna get home and get some rest.
I was excited. I thought we had a big talk.
Yeah, nice crowd.
I know, I was like, I don't recognize anyone.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
So... So just to frame this, we spent the better part of the 2016-17 school year working on a capital project plan. As most people know, and I'll just quickly summarize it, we had a facilities committee, I believe 23 people served. We did a needs assessment. We hired an architectural firm, KG and the Architects, and we have Walter Hauser here, and he'll be presenting in a few moments. The plan progressed, we did a number of public presentations in the fall and in the early winter, and then we pursued a property acquisition that the community did not support, and we needed to wait for that vote to occur so we could figure out what our next steps were with this capital project plan. The bulk of the work was done, we had Proposition 1 that we felt, the facilities committee, the board of last year, as well as, you know, the community and the feedback we got, we felt really could get behind this Proposition 1, which I believe addresses our needs effectively. So with our new board members, Cynthia Tate and Peter Cassin, joining us just for the past few months, they worked very hard this summer to really be brought up to speed on these plans. They were involved from the spring, attending facilities meetings and presentations and throughout their, the board election, but they've really drilled down these past few months. And on August 10, we did have our architects here, and we had a similar meeting to what we have this evening, and we, I think, made some good progress. Mr. Cassin- good progress. Mr. Cassin did ask about adding some security enhancements to Cottle. The architects, Walter Hauser, did come up with what I think is a good solution. And, you know, for 50,000 more, I think it certainly helps us with our safety goal down at the elementary school, and that is reinforcing our middle entrance to Cottle. Also, Cynthia and other board members did inquire about air conditioning. And the idea is that we are adding space, so there'll be newly constructed space in, you know, if we implement this plan, and that's a second story on Cottle. And also, we have looked at renovating a number of existing spaces, the two libraries in the district, one at Cottle, one at the middle high school, the two cafeterias in the district, one at the elementary school, one at the middle high school. And I think it's worth considering central air conditioning, particularly when you're doing a total renovation or adding space, it's probably the most cost-effective time to add air conditioning. The board, just to recap, last meeting on August 10th, they also were concerned about the classrooms. And although Ms. Lou, at the time, I think presented that our secondary, our middle and high school building, nearly every classroom does have a window unit. And I did a little research, I thought it would be helpful, as we get into the air conditioning discussion this evening, but Lauren Truhl helped go back and look up some temperatures from past years. And to put it in perspective, when you're looking at only school days, in 2015-16, there were nine school days when the temperature went above 85. And then, in 16-17, it was the same. So, maybe global warming is tapering off, I really don't think so. I think it's a real thing.
I'm sorry, Carl, how many days did you say?
Nine school days in the past two school years. So, I think that helps put things in perspective, because I think we all had a little sticker shock, quite frankly, no offense, but the central air for our original middle high school building, and for the original Cottle building, is quite expensive. It's not just central air, it's reinforcing roofs, it's running ductwork in a very old building, in a very challenging building. So, we're talking several million dollars to get to the classrooms. So, I think where we are now is, Ms. Lou has informed me since our last meeting, that Cottle, I believe, has about eight classrooms, Lee?
It sounds like 12.
12, okay, so that's even more than we thought. So, about 12 out of about 40 classrooms already have window units. So, what we believe we can do with the middle high school, original wing, with window units, with 12 already at Cottle, we do believe within our operating budget that we can continue to install window units, which are not ideal, I want to be very clear, they're a bit noisy, they're not, as far as, you know, visually, they're not the most appealing thing to look at. However, they, for practical purposes, it's an affordable way to at least keep our students and teachers comfortable when you have approximately nine, 10, maybe even 15 days that the temperature, you know, I picked 85, you know, even 83, 84, it can get a bit uncomfortable in our classroom, especially if you have a room where the sun is shining through the window. But, you know, I know for a fact, once you hit 85, it does get very uncomfortable. So, we're offering that to the board as one possible solution. In our, you know, original buildings allow us to continue on the path of installing window units, which we think is a very cost-effective solution. Tonight, what I asked Walter to do, because the board has requested this, to itemize and have the board consider all of our new construction or new renovations, look at and weigh the benefits versus the cost of adding central air in those areas. And I think it's certainly worth considering. The other, Michelle did bring up one question, our new wing that was built 10 years ago, behind the middle and high school with all the new science labs, there are 11 classrooms. Michelle asked, is the ductwork installed? And Walter has confirmed that it is in fact installed. So, that was constructed 10 years ago, there is no central air in that portion of the middle high school, but the new wing certainly has the infrastructure, the ductwork, to be able to more easily install central air. Now, I don't want to get too technical, because that's Walter's job, and if there's any, if any of the board members would like to add to that summary that I gave, please, or any questions?
Well, I think my question would just be that with the window units that are now in, especially on the third floor of the new wing, in the middle school, high school, is it sufficient? I mean, are we, is it working? Has it cooled it off? Is it sufficient? And if the answer to that is yes, then, you know, is that enough?
Well, Lee, I'm going to let Lee answer that, because she did upgrades there.
We did upgrade to larger units, we put in additional electrical currents if we needed it, but we went up to 15,000 BTUs in the larger classrooms, and I think that's doing a satisfactory job for all the teachers involved. And we moved around air conditioners so that the appropriate size air conditioner was in the proper room, and it seems to be working. I haven't, I've gotten some feedback that it's much better. There, also, the newer units are quieter and they're more efficient. So, so far, it seems to be, well, again, deage it in September when we have the hot days.
Okay, yeah, there were, and several years back, we started installing them, but they were inadequate. I think they were like 6,000 or 7,000 BTUs, it simply wasn't enough. So, some had window units, there were still some complaints on the really hot days, but Lee...
But we found some of them were just smaller than, were just adequate for the size of the rooms.
Exactly. And Lee did a great job, but it required also, you know, upgrading some electrical. And that may be the case at Cottle as well. But we would, you know, and again, I think we could do that through our operating budget.
Okay.
Okay. So, welcome, Walter. Welcome back, Walter.
Thanks for having me back. So, I have a, I do have a PowerPoint, I'll put that on quickly, but while I'm doing that, I do want to say one thing about the ductwork in the new high school wing. So, it is correct that the ductwork is installed and is insulated, and the insulation is key. There are two components with the ductwork that are crucial. One is that they're large enough and sized for, uh-oh, no, are sized for the cooling loads, and they're insulated so they don't sweat when we pump cool air through. So, the ductwork is there, however, there is some work that is required to control the air that comes through the ductwork under cooling load. So, we'll have to do a little bit of modification in the installation of, we're called VAV, variable air volume boxes, will have to be installed in the ductwork. But the bulk of the ductwork is there and is ready to go. So, when we were here on the, about 10 days ago, there were a couple of items that you had asked me to take a look at, or the, coming up? So, I'll go through those quickly and give you a quick update. The Cottle Elementary School, oh, here's Russ Davidson, my partner, coming in as we speak. So, we've incorporated a couple of components that we discussed at our last meeting into the base plan at Cottle Elementary School. You'll see them in a second, but the, we've added back in the rock lot. So, we're now showing an 18-stall parking lot on the rock lot. And, are we up yet?
Gary, sing, no signal.
There we go. Okay, so you'll see, just up from the softball field, in the dark gray is the proposed parking at the rock lot. And obviously, that'll bring a couple of benefits. The end result will be some additional parking stalls for the school. But we did talk about the possibility of using that as an interim or temporary play area while we're doing work on the gymnasium. A lot of that will have to do with schedule and phasing of the work itself. But that certainly gives us an opportunity there. So, we did show these last time, but I'll show them again to you. So, this is a rendering from the softball field, looking at Cottle Elementary. And you'll see a couple of new distinct features. One is the new main entry with a security vestibule. As we talked about last time, that'll be a double-height space. As you know, when you walk into Cottle, you go up half-light of stairs. So, we'll utilize that full volume, have an on-street entrance, and that'll be the home for our new security office. Then, just up the street, we see the addition to the cafeteria with the new fenestration, new windows, and new exterior wall. And then up even a little bit farther, we see the addition to the library with all new windows there. And this is an image of the new second-story classroom addition. So, only half, the top half of this is the new construction and the stair tower on the left side. So, the new entry, and then essentially what you see in white. And as we mentioned last time, the, our approach here is to keep the top portion of the building light, and lighten color, lighten feel, and make it feel as though it's going to fit into the neighborhood. And of course, these are conceptual, so there's a lot more design that needs to happen on these, but we thought they were interesting to start the discussion. And of course, the new gymnasium in the rear of Cottle. Again, we're looking to keep the top of these buildings looking, feeling very light, with lots of glass and natural light coming in. As you can see, we want this to be a light area and open space. And if you remember, this gym is approximately the same size as the high school gym. So, you can have your JV sports, and in fact, you could have a varsity competition here with enough adequate spectator seating. So, people can come, be bleachers, and enough seats for everybody. And then this is an interior view within the library. So, we see all the new technology, the new interior finishes, and of course, the new addition on the front of the building to allow us to bring in a whole bunch of natural light into that space. And then, again, in our cafeteria. So, this is our bump out, we have new ceilings, painting, and then new exterior wall, so we can bring in not, a bunch of great natural light into that space. If you remember, that's the old gymnasium. So, there's very few windows in there. If you haven't been in there, you should go take a look, it's pretty dark. But there's a lot we can do with the front of that, and of course, we'll get great views out into the field. So, at the high school, you remember, we're proposing a renovation of the cafeteria, some upgrades at the main entry, as well as renovation of the library and media center. So, and then, of course, we have some images of the library, which we showed last time. Again, a complete interior makeover, new furniture systems, and really looking to bring this space into 21st century learning environments. So, the budgets are a little different than last time we were here. The things that have changed are, we are now including, we've added back in the expansion of the library and cafeteria at Cottle. So, the numbers associated with that work have gone up a little bit. We've included the secondary entry security work at Cottle for an additional $50,000, and added the rock lot parking lot at the bottom for approximately $285,000. So, the total proposed work at Cottle is $13.6 million. Now, that does not include some of the air conditioning work we're going to talk about in a minute. What it does include for air conditioning is all of the new classrooms. So, the new classroom wing will be fully air-conditioned with central air. At the high school, middle school, this work remains the same as last time in terms of budgetary considerations. What I will point out, though, is we are, this does include air conditioning of the most recent high school wing, just the third floor, all right, for $140,000. And then, again, our infrastructure priorities, one and two, three and four, district-wide, as well as a district-wide exterior and interior door security upgrade project. Those numbers and scope of work remain unchanged from the last time we were here. So, with the changes at Cottle, that brings us to a grand total of $20,700,000. So, as the superintendent said last time we were here, we brought with us a little bit of sticker shock. So, there's a lot of work associated with potentially air conditioning in the entirety of the high school, middle school, and Cottle Elementary School. What we did do, however, is break down some of these costs. Last time we were here, we heard loud and clearly that you were interested in knowing what it would cost to air condition the first and second floor of the new high school wing, as well as the remainder of the third floor, because those areas were most susceptible to heating up, and the new wing could most easily be air-conditioned. So, at the high school, the, which is the bottom half of this chart, the new first and second floor wings, we believe is a total of $465,000. So, that would be the inclusion of the air conditioning units themselves, as well as the work required to install the VAV boxes and the additional controls integrated into your building automation system. The balance of the third floor is $535,000. Now, the reason that is more expensive is because, A, the ductwork's not there, and we're dealing with existing conditions, which the superintendent mentioned, which include an older building, masonry construction, and a fair amount of work associated with removing and replacing ceilings. So, all of that work would be brand-new, and it's somewhat technically challenging or difficult to do. At Cottle, I think most noteworthy, we've broken out the classroom. So, when we were here last time, we had numbers associated with cafeteria, gymnasium, and library, but what we heard very clearly is, what's most important is air conditioning the classrooms. So, we have a number to, associated with providing air conditioning in the classrooms below the new addition. So, the concept being, let's extend the proposed system, so to speak, down to the areas below the addition for a total of $420,000. Now, that would include all of the units, the ductworks, and the controls. This work does come at a little bit of a premium because of the sequencing of events and bringing ductworks through, ductwork through the existing roof structure. It brings with some technical difficulty. And then the balance of the existing classrooms is approximately $1.1 million. Now, to do the balance of the other classrooms would also entail upgrading the electrical service to Cottle Elementary. So, there's a fair amount of work associated with that. The service is original and undersized for providing power to those proposed air conditioning units. And then, the balance of Cottle outside of the classrooms and the large gathering spaces is, again, another $1.1 million. And that would include corridors and offices and support spaces. So, any questions on the air conditioning, scope of work, or budgets associated with them, before we move on?
When you, where it says all other existing classrooms, 1.1, is that wall units, or is that central?
Central air, central air, yes. So, it's a ducted system with a fresh air component.
Is the electrical upgrade included in that 1.1?
It's not.
So, you still have to figure out the inline box is big enough?
Exactly.
So on and so forth. So, that's kind of cool.
So, at the high school, just to get clarity, because I've heard this from the students, the old third floor, that's the section of the school that usually you try not to use in the afternoon, because it gets too warm. Is that accurate?
So, the original middle high school building?
Yes.
The third floor, that is probably, those are the hottest rooms in the building?
Right. So, when it gets warm, you may move classes out of those classrooms?
Well...
Because they're not really, it's not comfortable enough, I guess, to teach.
Well, and as Lee said earlier, there were window units for many years, but they were inadequate. You didn't have enough BTUs, so Lee worked on upgrades this past year. And they are better. I'm not going to tell you it's ideal, but certainly with 15,000 BTUs in maybe a 600-square-foot classroom, it's much better than it was.
So, you were able to keep those rooms online?
Most of the complaints we got were noise versus feeling ability. So, at the end of the day, I think everybody felt that the rooms were comfortable enough, that they were not complaining. Once we put the larger units in, there were no issues in terms of cooling.
Yeah, my concern would obviously be with our, the whole part of what we're doing here with the capital project, because we're expecting more children, larger classes, more use of more classrooms, if there are rooms that really are not bearable to teach in. And I thought those were them, but now that I understand what you're saying, but I would think that would be something, in my mind, that may be worth being considered.
Okay, so let me ask you, on the budget here, the third floor air conditioning, is it for the old building or the new building, the new part of the building?
So, I think that's a good point.
The new part of the building, so that's not...
That's not in there, that's not in the 20.7.
That's the 5.35.
No, no, it's in here for $140,000, third-floor air conditioning in the high school, middle school.
That's the new one, correct?
In the new wing.
That's the new wing.
So, that's not even addressing the classrooms that Rob just mentioned.
No, that's the 5.35.
So, and for clarification, so if we want to only have central air in the new wing, it's the 140... wing, it's the 140 plus the 465?
Correct.
Okay.
For all three floors, yeah, the new wing.
Okay, so roughly, or a little over 600,000, we can do the new wing. So that, that is one option, I think, worth considering.
I'll just point out that window units, although they may work, they are very noisy.
Sure.
And they're very inefficient and they don't introduce fresh air at the code complaint rate. So it's an interim step, but it's not really central air.
What exactly is included in all those, all other spaces when we say that? What rooms are there? I mean, I know you mentioned the hallways, but is that necessary?
So we're talking about a Cottle. I'm just going to get back to the plan. So gave you a distinct number for the classrooms all the way to the left, everything on the left of the gymnasium. And then gave you a number just for the classrooms, but there, there are a number of spaces seen around the auditorium, around the, the office area that make up a fair, fairly significant portion of the building. So it'd be all the other support spaces, including the corridors.
So you know, I, I think the goal this evening, and it's a goal, because I know it's a complicated discussion, I think all of us would want to see our students learning comfortably all the time. But you know, when, when we're talking about, you know, the millions of dollars that it costs, I, I think we may have to, you know, narrow it down to what we think is cost effective, what, what makes sense. Russ makes a good point, you know, the, these window units, and again, I'm not trying to sell it as it's, it's a great solution, but it's, but it's an inexpensive solution. And Russ, I think, just before you arrived, I pointed out that in the past two years, there've been about nine days where the temperature was above 85, school days. Just to give it a little bit of perspective, you have 180 school days. You know, if, if you're going to invest several million dollars, I, I think, you know, that has to be considered. And I'm not saying, you know, when it hits 82 or 83, if you have a room that gets a lot of sun, that could be uncomfortable. So you know, I, I think the board just needs to know that. But I think we have to weigh, you know, what we think the community will bear in, in the way of paying for this.
Well, I thought we were also going to get a price for those wall units. I keep, I keep figuring it, the, like the Mitsubishi.
Not the window.
Not the window units.
Correct.
So is there a middle between the central air and a wall, and a, and a window unit that is not efficient, that?
So the, the numbers that are included here are actually a combination of the variable refrigerant systems, which is the Mitsubishi splits that you would think about. And those are the systems that OLA consulting engineers had included. And if you remember, Jill, when we were here last, mentioned that because of the different conditions throughout the buildings, they, there are various systems that they're proposing to use and they're not simply one or the other. But I believe at least at the high school, a vast majority of the systems do use the Mitsubishi variable refrigerant systems that are ducted. So we're bringing in fresh air. So I would say that those are considered in this budget. And there isn't necessarily an option that just includes those that would be the most efficient.
Because you have to provide fresh air by code. So a pure BRF system is just recirculating. So this is a hybrid.
Well, it, it would, I think it would be worth knowing what that would cost and where we could use that.
Well, they're in there.
Yeah, that's what we're using.
Like the, the Cottle classrooms, you said it, the 1.1 is central air.
Yeah, so it, it is, I guess the difference between what we've proposed here and maybe what you're thinking is that this system is ducted. So it's the same exact unit that you see on the wall, except it has a duct that brings in fresh air in addition to just being placed on the wall and recirculating the air in the room.
Because the code requires that.
Yeah. Once we supply the air conditioner.
Unlike a whole, or an office, you're not required.
So I think, I think last week, remember when we met last, then I, maybe we took away the fact that if we just put in units, there wouldn't need to be that duct requirement.
Right.
I don't recollect, and you may have said it, that we needed to bring in fresh air. So that, I think, for me, you're saying, I understand that it's code, but I, I didn't hear that last time. So I was under the impression, maybe it was just a unit that you could install on the wall. That's, I think, what Peter was talked about. So maybe that's, that's what I was thinking.
And then you're not, we don't have the noise issue.
Right.
One of the problems is you do have some fresh air, but just, once you cool the air in the room, and if you don't cool the fresh air coming in, you can cause condensation to occur. You're bringing warm air into a cooled room. So it's sort of the collateral effect of cooling a room, you need to cool the ventilation air or else you'll get condensation happening.
You know what, Russ, do you want to like move up here and then when you're talking, we'll give you the mic because people at home aren't going to be able to hear you.
Or you can join Walt.
Whatever you come from.
Yeah, whatever you want.
Yeah, once we add the cooling component for Capital Project and permanent through the state, the state's going to say, okay, great, you're cooling the air, but now you've taken away the incentive to open the window. So they have to provide fresh air and that's how the code's designed. And I'm sorry if we weren't clear about that last time, but the systems that OLA has considered do utilize those types of air conditioners, but because of this application, we do have to dump them.
It's still, it's still a very cost effective system and a lot less than a fully ducted central system. And you know, there's a lot more fine tuning to do with it, but you are required to do the fresh air once you upgrade your ventilation system to current standards. And even though Cottle has some fresh air, it's not up to current standards. So it's, it's as little ducting as possible to meet code and that air is tempered and then the rest is done with a BRF unit in the duct, in, in line, in the ductwork.
But it still costs that much, that's the problem.
So if we were to go with, with a full air conditioner, full central air, with that, that price, that would then double?
Probably another 50%. And, and the bigger problem in Cottle, you don't have room for the ductwork. And, and the older part of this building, you don't have room for the ductwork anyway.
Okay, so I think we have the information we need on the AC. It's just a matter of what we think we want to do with it. And I think that's going to require us to kind of give it a little bit of thought. I mean, personally for me, if every classroom has an air conditioner for the number of days we need it, I think it's a good option. I don't want to, you know, not take advantage of an opportunity where we can, while we're in construction, do more, but I don't like the idea of only certain areas having something better than others. And that I struggle with. You know, I feel like it should be equal and everyone should be sort of in those same, but maybe that's, maybe that's not the way everyone else is viewing it. And you know, if, if, and as long as it's adequate. I mean, I don't want to say, let's put a unit in there and then it's not doing its job. That, that wouldn't serve the purpose that we're looking for.
I, you know, I, I would, I think you make a good point. I do think the strong, the strong consideration should be given to, but, but it's built into the cost of the new second floor addition on Cottle.
Correct.
So that, that we have solved and that would of course be hotter because it's, it's a second story. But I think, for example, at Cottle, to have central air in the library, now you're doing a gut renovation, but it's going to look like a brand new library. I think for 75,000, I think that deserves consideration. The cafeteria, you know, for 175, I, I think that also deserves consideration. You're, you're in there doing the, the major renovations anyway. And I will say, I was here, you know, when the new wing was completed 10 years ago and you know, I, I think the district did a fabulous job and you know, there were, there was a lot of praise for it, but the only criticism I remember is, wow, you did all that work, you had created a beautiful new addition, you did not install central air. So you know, there may be some in the community that look at it, you know, well, you're doing this major renovation, you're creating this new beautiful space and you're not completing the job. But now, I will say, when you talk about air conditioning in, in the, the Cottle gym, that is a lot more expensive. That's 365,000. And I believe Walter and Russ told us last time that very few gyms have central air.
Correct. And they have very high ventilation requirements. So they're already very well ventilated without mechanical cooling, which really take care of a lot of those warm days.
We do, I, I think the board, you know, you should consider, we do have an awful lot of summer activity. We have summer programs, we have our task and, and you know, it's not that, we should do it only for the task program because that's not actually a school program, but they are Cottle students. We, we have summer programs of our own. To have some air conditioning, you know, in, throughout the building, I, I think it provides some relief to our students who are here during the summer months. So I, I think it would be welcomed, but, but of course, then this drives up the price, the total cost of the project. Here, you know, I will say, I served as middle school principal for nine years, our cafeteria below this room, even though it's, I guess, partially underground, you know, like a basement, but it still can get uncomfortable if, you know, one of our goals, by the way, our students are reluctant to stay and enjoy the cafeteria because quite frankly, it's, it's, it's rundown and, and it's, you know, it's not the most, it's not bright, it's dark, it's dingy. But our goal and, and the, the middle high school administration, we talk about this, if this library is, I mean, what, what Walter just showed us, I think the students will be, you know, you know, very, very motivated to be in here and stay in here and make use of this space. But I'd also like to see that in the cafeteria. And I would, you know, just put out there that, you know, for 245,000, if this space all has air, I think it's worth considering for below. And, and I think it would do a lot to keep our students comfortable during lunch, during recess, and I think they would really, really make good use of this space.
The, the library renovation, the high school, middle school, the 1.9, does that include air?
Here?
Yes.
Air conditioned already.
We have it already.
Okay, so then it'll just be modified.
Yeah, we reuse the system.
Now Lee has said that this system that cools this library right now is getting older. It may need some upgrades and we could probably handle that out of our operating budget when the time comes. I think we've done some servicing and some work there, but it certainly is, is comfortable and it's, you know, it's functional at this point.
So just, just maybe, Lee, just to kind of get a sense of what the cost would be to the taxpayer. We went through the numbers at the last meeting. For the typical home, 8.5 thousand assessed value, what was the number for every hundred thousand dollars? Can you tell me that increase?
And it's approximate because it depends on whether something's completely adable or not adable. But just to give you a rough estimate, it's about, for every hundred thousand dollars in construction cost that you change, it's about three dollars per typical Taka Ho home.
Right. Okay. I ju, I think sometimes we're talking such big numbers, I think it's relevant that we're aware of what these incremental changes will cost the homeowner. I know we have the, a number in mind, we're trying to work around the 20 million dollar number. But I think at, at, sometimes in a situation as we talk through whether we should increase, I think that's relevant, that people are aware of what the cost would be to them. Outside of, even though we're going, we may go over that 20 million dollar number, what the cost is to, to each household. Okay. Thank you.
We touched on this a little bit on the tent about the, the figures we have here now, they have a contingency, 30%, that's it, right, 30%?
So the, these numbers are fully baked. They have everything you would need soup to nuts. So includes the hard construction costs, so the bricks and mortar, which you actually pay the contractor for. It includes contingencies, both design and construction at this point, as well as an allowance for project costs on a percentage basis for all of these things. So the project costs would cover everything that's not bricks and mortar. So professional fees, bonding costs, legal fees, anything that you need in support of the construction activities, it included, we talked a little bit about clerk of the works or construction manager, that would be covered in that cost. So these costs are total project estimates. There's nothing in addition to these costs.
Okay, so at what point do we have a better idea of what the actual costs are? So I'm just going to throw something out there. Let's just say, we're looking at the cafeteria, as Carl just said, it would be nice to have air conditioning in the cafeteria in the high school, middle school. So the renovation for the cafeteria is 1.6, does not include air conditioning?
At the high school, middle school?
Mm-hmm.
1.3?
1, um, 1.3, I'm sorry, yes, 1.3.
Correct.
Right, it does not include air conditioning.
Correct.
So let's just say that that line item doesn't go over, we could do air conditioning, possibly.
Yeah, so at this point, in terms of the overall design process, we've done a very small percentage of the total amount of work. So incrementally along the way, let's say if the project did proceed, at this point, we're using conceptual estimates based on the amount of information we have in hand without full designs in hand. We're using comparative costs for similar projects that we've seen in other school districts and recently bid and constructed. So if the project were to move forward, we would complete various phases of design. So schematic design, design development, construction documents, and then of course, construction. Incrementally along the way, as we develop more and more detail, we do more and more detailed estimates. So there are certainly a, a number of benchmarks before you actually bid the project, where you check the scope of the work against the estimate versus current construction cost data. And we use a, a third party estimating consultant for that, excuse me. And there will be times at which you can check the cost versus the scope of the work. So I think what you're asking is, is there a point in time at which you can evaluate, can you air condition?
If, if we're under or what if you're over, what if you're over?
You have to evaluate the scope again. Now we, we keep a database of all of our projects for schools and we have a, we think a very good sense of what these things cost. So we're confident we have enough money to do the project, but you're right, you're constantly checking the scope, checking the costs and it's, you certainly don't want to be surprised by anything by the time you get out of the bid.
I mean, even if, if we go forward, what we would want to do, so we would want to take 90% of the scope, say that's base bid. Let's bid the other 10% as alternates. So when contractors bid at hard cost, they give you itemized cost for this other 10. So then when we open up bids, if something's happened in the market that's bad, which has happened over the last 30 years.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop. Do you mind maybe coming up here, just make sure, because you have your back, no one's going to be able to hear yours. And I think it's important, what you're saying, because this is really the guts of it, you know, people, I think, I think.
Carrie, does she need to be behind both mics? Podium?
I, I got it. No problem.
I, I think that's the part people really want to grasp, you know, because we're, we're talking numbers that are, there's 30% markup on. And I think if you could walk us through the process like you, like you just were, as to the timing of, we're, we're going to, we're going to go out with this number, 20.7, let's just say that's the number. But what if we don't spend 20.7? What if when all the bids come back and it's not 20.7, what happens?
Uh, there's, you got several options. Usually when that happens, we know in advance and you'll say, hey, we really want to air condition the third floor of the existing building. And we'll design that as a bid alternate. So when the contractors bid, they said, well, we, we're hoping it would come in low and look, that third floor air conditioning came in and we can do it. We're going to be able to deliver to taxpayers a little bit more of what we needed to do. And that's a good thing. Sometimes the market goes the other way and you have to tighten up and say, hey, we got the base scope and that's all we're able to deliver now. If you come in under and you've got everything you want and you don't want us to design and bid something X else, you cannot borrow the money. As a board, you cannot borrow the money and say, that tax impact that we estimated for you, it's never going to happen. It's going to be less. And we've seen both things happen. Most often in our projects, about 50% through the project, our clients are trying to find other things to do for the money because we're appropriately conservative. This is budget development. This isn't cost estimating. We need, you need to have 100% positive budget on 2% design. We're good at it, but it's hard and we have to be transparent. And we have to be transparent about that. But I can tell you, the Brewster Central School District with a 30 million dollar bond right now, 50 percent of the air conditioning of the remaining building is being paid for out of the bond because it's not needed. And the district's finding the other 50 percent from two years of capital line items. So they're getting more than they told the taxpayer for the same amount. It's a complicated process and as Walt said, we take it very seriously. We keep databases and Walt and I are the chief conceptual estimators in our firm. But once we, once you approve a number, we hire an outside third-party estimator to estimate our drawings before we go to bid. And we'll come here and report that and say, we're over, we shouldn't have stone flooring here. We need to go back to vinyl tile. Or we're doing fine, let's go to the next step. Or it's tracking under, maybe we should design a few things as alternates. And we'll do all that and we'll report to the Board of Education at the end of each design stage. So it's a, it's a detailed process.
And what hap, okay, those are all good scenarios when you're under. What happens if you're over?
Well, that's why we have the design contingency and the construction contingency and the escalation built into our numbers. Because we think that they're safe numbers for base bid. But you know, during a design phase, we haven't designed the second floor of Cottle yet. There's a science room up there. Does it have, you know, complete casework on the full perimeter or half of the perimeter? We don't even know yet. We haven't even gotten that far. So we may in design say, let's do a lot of casework. And we may find out during our estimating phase, we're over. Well, maybe we don't get full casework. And, or maybe we go from terrazzo floor in the entries to a vinyl composite tile. So there's a lot of value decisions and it's a constant tweaking and adjusting as we go through the estimating process.
I think the important piece too is the timing of when you find out the budget, the costs are going up. You don't want to find that out at the day of opening bids, you want to know in advance. And that's, that's why we have the process for budget control and estimating. There are a number of incremental decisions along the way that can influence the outcome of the process.
And even, even with our base budget, we will take items and bid them as alternates. So if there is something, for example.
If you're willing to give up to me?
Yeah, that aren't the critical things, you know, like the fancy ceiling in the library versus a plain ceiling or, you know, I don't know, but.
We look at alternates as a way to maximize value so that it's not binary or above or below. But there's a menu list, so to speak, to maximize total value that can be delivered.
But that way, when bids are opened, there will be some set of numbers that get you most, if not all, of what you told the voters you would deliver, that you can award. Because there are times in a construction market fluctuates and SED causes delays, where we had a recent district where nobody bid the project. Never happened in 30 years, but things happen. But that project, by the way, is under construction now on budget. But it takes patience and a lot of different techniques to get there.
So, so Russ, based on what you're saying, you know, we're at this point where, this evening we wanted to focus on air conditioning. So, you know, one possibility, I just throw it out there to the board, would be we look at spaces like the Cottle library and cafeteria, 250 combined. We look at the middle high school cafeteria because the library already has it. And you can, for under 500,000, deliver central air to those newly renovated spaces. The new wing of the middle high school, all three floors I have estimated at 605,000, give or take. Maybe that's something where if we're under budget, we say, that's something we would like to do. But right now, you know, we, we don't want to go that high with an, with an overall proposal to the public. Lee, I notice, has her calculator here, so if we asked her to do some math for us, just to get some ideas. I mean, if you want to play around with that this evening, there is the timeline. Walter, did you bring the new timeline with you? Okay. So, you know, I said this last time we met, you know, I, and I think Walter did a great job of explaining, you know, this, the timeline does concern me. You know, right now where we left off, we talked about a potential December 5th public vote. To get there, there are a lot of things that need to happen, which I would let the architects explain. But what that means is, in the summer of 2018, we could do things like our fields and there are certain things that we can get done, new turf field. But the construction would not begin until summer of 2019. But if we, if we're beyond December, my concern is that we may lose the summer of 2019.
We talked about it a little bit last time I was here and there's notable differences in increase in permitting time from SED. I think, excuse me, about a month ago, we were talking about a 22-week period. And now SED is, actually it's gone up to 33 weeks as of this week. For their review, that's just when you get comments delivered to you. So our concern, and you know, this is strange times, and we're talking about over eight months of permitting, just waiting in line for somebody to take a look at our project. There are remedies that SED is talking about. They're talking about a third-party review process where you can actually pay to have somebody else review your project and send comments to SED. None of that's in place, we don't know when that's gonna happen. It's not, I'm not trying to scare you guys, I just want to say, we're concerned about that review period because it's a long review period. And your construction window for summer work is somewhat binary. If we don't hit the ground in construction in the summer of 2019, in that June-July period, where we can take the roof off the classroom area at Cottle, or we can take the old gym down, that work really can't happen during the school year. It's so noisy and so disruptive. But that work needs to happen when the students aren't there. So we can continue to work through this school year. If we miss the window, it becomes exponentially more difficult if that work's done. That's our concern, it's really the change in SED time period. There's no reason we shouldn't be able to hit this schedule, but that's the one wild card that is out of all of our control.
Equally, equally important on timing is bidding it when contractors are hungry for work. Because if you delay and you're bidding in late May, that'll have a dramatic impact on prices. If we're bidding in February, yeah, it's an ideal time to bid.
So then the, the work for the new addition for Cottle, that couldn't start till the 2019? Why wouldn't that start first, considering that's the biggest need?
So it'll take us about six months to design the addition and do all the construction documents. So if you have a December referendum, sometime around July of 2018, we'll be submitting that to New York State for permitting. They'll then be there for 33 weeks until somebody picks up, takes a look at it, to send us comments. That puts us into April 2019, where we have a permit in hand. And then we can start to bid the project. So it's really the two chunks. Our six months plus SED's eight months gets us out to the spring of 19. Now, there are, as the superintendent mentioned, a couple of components that can happen faster. They'll take us less time to design and they'll re-review by SED faster because they're quote-unquote alteration level one projects, namely is fiscal turf field. That could happen in summer of 2019. I know, the date sounds so far away, but.
We wish it could happen faster too.
No, I was just, I was just asking. Well, yeah, I knew there probably was a reason. The other thing I wanted to mention, for the bump outs now, that's included now in these numbers, right?
Correct.
And you, and there was no design that you were shown without it, just that it was out of curiosity?
In the rendering, is there?
Yeah.
It would look much the way it looks today.
We, I think as I mentioned last time, we had an allowance for new windows in the cafeteria, but we certainly couldn't do it to the extent that we see in the addition.
So when you discussed earlier about the design choices, the material choices, how is that decided?
Well, that's up to you as a district. We often see when a bond passes, a district forms a building committee that includes a few board members, administrators, and some of the principals or parents. And that we would meet with them periodically as we develop the design to get feedback. And we work on it together, but we would certainly lead. And then at the end of schematic design and design development and about halfway through construction documents, we'll come to the full Board of Education in a public meeting and say, here's where we are. Here's what the materials are, here's some more renderings, and we'll ask for your approval. So none of this, it's a very transparent and open process.
If I could add to that, you know, 10 years ago, we went with teams out to schools. I'm sure Russ and Walter would recommend different libraries to take a look at, different cafeterias to take a look at, that may be similar to what we have in mind. Steam rooms at elementary schools. So, you know, we would create a team and go out and really look and then collaborate with our architects to refine those plans. That's an exciting phase of the process.
It is the fun part.
Okay, does anyone have anything else? I think the other question that we talked about at the last meeting on the 10th was on the, Rob had brought it up about the infrastructure priorities three and four. And if there was a need for all of that to be done at this time, could we hold off on it? And I think Lee, you were gonna get back to us on that?
I was, I was away last week, but I started the process talking to Walter about some of the priority three and fours that we could eliminate. And you had put together a list of, I want to go over that in more detail, I have that with me. But I think there are a couple of projects that we could take a look at. And then there are some others in those later stages that we could look at, maybe some other ways of financing if we wanted to take them out of this initial project. And that's something I can talk to you and the architects about at the next meeting.
Okay, so you can get back to us on that when we talk again?
I think there could be some that we could take out.
Okay, good.
Have we considered, I don't, we haven't had a full update in a while, but have we considered possibly using some of the money we were gonna use on the Ridge Street property, maybe to tackle some of these priorities, possibly? And then we would, we could then maybe, if we, say we use 600 grand or 500,000 off of priorities three and four, then maybe, you know, then we can get the air conditioning done by using, you know, if we have fund bounds or some of that money we're gonna use for Ridge. You know, when I quickly looked at the list provided for the threes and fours and, you know, there's really no one large item. It's a lot of small projects, the VTC, some brickwork, steps. So that may be things that when you get a closer look at it, you could schedule into our regular operating budget over the next five years. And then, like I said, there's paving. I would imagine that's for like the parking lots. So there's things like that that probably could be scheduled over the next few years. But I think in the end though, when I kind of got to, in the end here, the 800,000, although I did ask for it, the 800,000 is 4 percent of the bond. I mean, it's a, it's not a significant number in the scheme of the whole project. But if we can save some money there, then maybe you can get some of the air conditioning done as part of the capital project.
And if I could add just some thoughts on that. So I, I think the board, you know, maybe another way to approach it is, what number do you think the community will support? What will this community get behind? And, you know, just doing some quick math, and please don't quote me on these numbers, but for example, what I proposed earlier, if you took all of Prop 1, which Dodge and Rob worked with Facilities Committee, and that, that's been something worked on for an entire year. And I think everyone really feels strongly about that. That's 20,711 dollars. If you added.
20 million.
20 million. Thank you. If you add air conditioning in the two cafeterias, middle high school, Cottle, and you add the library, now, and Lee, please double-check my math, 21,306,000. So if the board believes, well, 21 million is too high, we'd like to get under 21 million. I think, Rob, what you're proposing is absolutely correct. We could look at that infrastructure budget and we could reduce it and do some things through our operating budget, and Lee has maybe some other creative ideas. I just get concerned about doing too much of that because we are still in a tax cap environment. I remind the board, although financially we've been very responsible, we're sound, but we were only able to increase our budget by eight tenths of a percent last year. So Lee and I have had some in-depth discussion on this topic. I think if the board wishes to get to a target number, that it's certainly worth, Rob, I think you're 100 percent correct, we can do something like that. We could spread some stuff out, we could delay some stuff. But I'm also very mindful that this is a very old building. And there are always needs. Cottle also, you know, the original building is an aging building. So like brick pointing, for example, you know, you start and then you discover new things and, and, you know, these buildings require a lot of maintenance. They're gorgeous, but they're old. So I think if the board has that goal of hitting a certain target number, we can work that way. So, you know, and if you need some time to think it over, but, you know, if you have some thoughts this evening that you want to share, we have our architects here as well.
So is the rock lot set in stone? I'm sorry, I wasn't having time, because.
Yeah, I'm thinking that something that could be taken off.
You know, when we were talking about the gym, you had a couple of parents come up and talk. And they were talking about safety and their kid crossing the street and putting their jacket on their kid. And, not that I think it's unsafe crossing, I think, you know, the teachers all do a great job, but it's 285,000 dollars there, they can go towards.
I was thinking this towards the air conditioning, some of those spaces.
And if you can take off even another 150 out of the infrastructure, and, you know.
Yeah, you can get all the air conditioning.
And so, and here, where I brought it up last meeting, you know, Dodge and Rob, you were with the Facilities Committee, and one thing we did hear a lot was parking. That, that came up, parking is difficult.
Parking from where though? Because I know that parking's an issue when there's sporting events. People not using the lot and also blocking the street on middle.
But think about this, you saw that gorgeous Cottle gym. And now we can have spectators. So it wouldn't.
But it's only 18 spaces.
I know it's only 18, but it helps, it's better than nothing.
It's a lot of money for 18 spaces, that's a.
It is, but there's a, there's another practical reason, okay? This, I talked to Lou Cugliato this morning. This is a nightmare, we went through this project in detail because I needed to bring him up to speed. This is a very, very challenging project, we always said this. And the part of the reason we were considering a standalone gym was the challenges of tearing down a gym and rebuilding it.
You're ripping that out and it's gonna be one year.
So, so Dodge, what I did say last week, or on August 10th, excuse me, last meeting, was that that space could serve, and I think I spoke to Walter and Russ about this, put up a tent that can serve as kind of like an outdoor gym for that year. I mean, you know, I was an elementary assistant principal. 600 students need a place to, to exercise and I can. And right now, we're using the stage this, this year, one of, one of the shifts. We added special ed programs, which were needed, required. Music is happening in the, in the auditorium. We created a small music room, but most of the large classes will happen in the auditorium. I don't have a place for phys ed. And I know it is nearly 300,000, but in my opinion, it's money well spent simply because there's a practical purpose for the construction phase. We can put up a tent, we may be some heaters if need be, and we could have our students out there, even if it's raining, they could still go out and have phys ed. And then when all is said and done, you do have something that is, I think, more valuable than what's there now. Right now, it's just a vacant lot. Now, those are my thoughts, but.
So let me ask you, as part of your service, do you work with the school administration for exactly what something like Carl just mentioned? In terms of what do we do in the meantime, as far as when the classrooms are under construction, when the gym is under construction?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a whole section of education code about school buildings during construction. So we have to show a phasing and exiting plan and temporary facilities plan in our filing to SED. And then the contractors are obligated to keep noise and follow that phasing and implementation plan, so.
So we will know that plan of what's in place when we get the approve? Because we're, we can't go out to vote on something until we have all the approvals, right?
Uh, no.
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 Oh, so that's not in the permitting phase?
It is in the permitting phase, which happens after the public vote for funding.
Oh, after the public vote, okay.
In New York State, they actually don't allow school districts to invest in 100 percent design until the voters have approved the funding for the construction.
Well, I just think that our community is going to be very concerned about what the plan is. And we're gonna have to be able to communicate something to our community before we ask them to vote for something, because their children are gonna be.
We can work it out in concept, just as we have here, and talk about temporary gym, temporary exiting, that, you know, there'll be no steel erection or noisy construction over occupied classrooms. It cannot happen. So we can communicate all that when we go through the public communications process.
The biggest thing's gonna be is when we tear that gym down, the parents are gonna go nuts. That for one whole year, there's gonna be no gym for those kids. So, just something to think about. So, just something to think about.
And how long, for the cafeteria, how long does that take?
Well, I think a lot of that foundational work can happen while the existing cafeteria is in operation. So I think the transition from old cafeteria to new cafeteria will happen over summer.
So could the cafeteria be used for gym?
That's what I was thinking.
Some type of indoor space?
It'll be completely usable, yes.
So I think Cynthia had asked this, is there a way to know for each phase of this project, what the timeframe for each of them would be?
We can make a conceptual estimate for sure.
And kind of like what would happen first, what would happen next? Because then maybe you have an idea of, oh, if that space doesn't exist, like, can you use the cafeteria? I don't know.
I think that's important to do when we're communicating to the public, and we'll definitely work with you on that, absolutely.
Okay.
But the main thing is we have to come up with a number for you.
To start.
We have to have a number and a scope.
We need to start.
Okay.
Okay.
And it sounds like you're close, very close.
So to hold December 5th, we have to give you a number by what date? The 28th?
I think it was October 4th, didn't it say that?
Yeah, well, and again, I just...
October 2nd.
October 2nd is when you have to make a final decision on scope and budget.
And, you know, I just, and I ask the board to be mindful, and again, I'm not, this is not a scare tactic either, please, but, you know, even with, with an October vote, which is fine, and I think we'll probably have things pretty well worked out before that date, of course, but we have back to school nights, for example. You know, there's an opportunity to communicate what our plans are, you know, at each building. I mean, you know, we're fortunate, in Tocco, we have nearly every parent attend back to school night. So, you know, there are opportunities in the fall. The fall, in my opinion, is an ideal time to start marketing, communicating, and explaining this to our community. So, you know, I do get concerned about losing time, but I also recognize, I said this last time, we have two new board members, and you all need to be comfortable with this.
You know, I'm more concerned on what the feeling is out in the community, and I wish more people were here tonight so that we could get an idea.
Allison, did you want to comment on anything?
Because we're thinking, oh, this sounds good.
I mean, I missed last meeting. You're going to have to, I'm sorry to do this to you, but you're going to have to, like, join us, or you can come up here.
Sit right there.
Pull the chair up. Well, we just want to pick you up on speaker, Allison.
She's going to go up here.
Wherever you're coming from.
They made me do it.
Our PTA president, Allison Hellerin.
Okay, so I missed the meeting of the 10th, which was the only meeting that I've missed through this whole process. And my only, I have two concerns. One is I know that the gyms usually are not air-conditioned, but I was in the gym. We had an event at the Cottle gym in May when we had, out of the nine days that were over 85 degrees, we had three straight in the 90s. It was completely unbearable. You couldn't even breathe. And I'm thinking, even when there is one day, I mean, 85 degrees, I think, is a little bit even high, because I know in my house, if it gets to 80, I'm putting on the AC. But, you know, when you have a lot of people and the kids are running around, it would be nice to have a gym that is air-conditioned, especially when you're talking about the new gym, having, when I saw the, the design, it's beautiful with all that light coming in, but I'm thinking, sun, making it even hotter than what it is. So it would be nice to do it. My other concern is, and I mentioned this to Carl, that with the window units, I did bring that up, and I was told that it's a little bit of an issue with the way that the windows open in Cottle to put window units in. Like, the new wing, they slide back and forth, but in the old wing, they fold out, and that makes it difficult to put a window AC in.
It just makes it more expensive.
Okay, so...
We have to retrofit the window.
Okay. So, I mean, that's more than when you're just talking about like a $500 air conditioner for the roof.
It's $500 plus the retrofit.
Oh, yes.
Right.
So we have, we've done some of them already.
I think, yeah, it's probably between 2,000 and 3,000 per classroom.
If you have to do the electrical wiring as well.
If you also have to do electric, which is not always necessary in every room, but it could run up to 2,000 to 3,000 per room.
Okay.
We have 12 out of 38.
We need 28.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to spend the 8 million. That was insane, of course, but definitely it is a priority. When I was meeting with Mr. Cuglietto, I had asked a bunch of parents what they would like me to convey to him, and just that morning, I happened to ask my daughter, who is going into fifth grade, and her number one thing was air conditioning. So, which was surprising. But, so, it is important, it is important to put into the classroom. My other issue is when I look at this timeline and I think of my own children, I have, my son is going into the third grade. When we started talking about this, he was in the second grade. He's in the biggest class that we have at Cottle. He's a four-session class, a five-session class. And I look at this, and by the time, he will no longer be in Cottle when this project is done. And that is a little disturbing when I think about how much time we lost last year. And I really, if there's any way that we could move this up, get, get this moving a little quicker, you know, I know all these decisions are important, and I know that this is a lot of money, but the, the population that we're trying to help is moving along without anything being resolved. And that's really, I mean, it's an issue. It's an issue for me, anyway, and I'm sure it's an issue for a lot of Cottle parents right now.
Yeah, I actually was talking to some parents. I don't, I won't have any more children in Cottle, and I said, I don't know how I would feel if it was my kids. So it would be nice for people who have kids there to say, what is their feeling? Because I said, I might say, you know what, forget about it, because I'm voting no because of it. And like, that's the scary part, that, you know, you don't, I hope people don't feel that way, you know?
Well, if you have kids and you're going, do I want my kids to go through this, this construction phase where they're not going to have a gym, they're not going to have a cafeteria? So I, I, I see it, and then I see it on the other, and the other side. So it is a scary thing, but it would be nice to hear from people, because I don't know what they, what people think.
I think, you know, right now, everyone really agrees that this expansion needs to happen, but I think you do lose people when then you see, oh, well, it's not getting done until 2020. That kind of then does make people back away a little bit and think, is there a quicker, less expensive solution?
Well, the key is it would start in 2019, 2018 possibly, right?
You'll see some things.
Even if it's something, the key is we're starting construction.
No, but I think the thing is that people want to see other classrooms.
But what's going to start in 2018 is the turf, which quite frankly, is just saving my living room floor with all the turf all over it.
Right, but even...
Yeah, I think the classrooms are what people...
Okay, but the classroom renovation, the second floor at Cottle, it cannot happen until the summer because we have to take the roof off, right? I mean, so it's not even if we said we save time along the way, it can't be done.
It can't start in 2019 summer, no matter what, so.
I mean, that, so if we could just do everything to keep this timeline, I know that you don't anticipate it extending another year, but I don't think any of us anticipated last year extending a full year. So if we could just try as hard as we can to really come to a decision, come to a number, and get it moving forward at this point so that we don't lose any more time, that's really my biggest concern.
Just out of curiosity, and you don't have to answer it, but I'm just wondering how, if you've talked to anyone and how they feel in regards to that number, staying at the 20 million, going over, like, do people have any opinion on that?
I mean, I think that you guys know as well, it's a very, the community is a very split community. You know, Tocco is an interesting place. You have a lot of different levels of income coming in, and you have some people who would look at a couple of million and say, it's just a, you know, a dinner out that I couldn't go out for. You have other people who are like, that's an enormous amount of change for me, and I can't do it. It's just, it's such a wide range of, of, of people and how they want to use their money. It's hard to, it's hard to say, really, in my opinion. I mean, you talk to a lot of people, and a lot of people are, go for it. You turn around and you talk to another group, and they're not. It's a very, certainly a hot topic, as we all know.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you very much.
One of the things that I've seen done, that we've seen other districts do, is if you're going to have your open houses and you're, and you have a certain subset of the work that the board agrees must happen, start to communicate that, and then put out the questions on the remainder to that group, so that when you sit on October 2nd, you have the benefit of their feedback when you have engaged audiences, and you've solved both things. You've gotten your feedback, and you've started the communications process. Just a suggestion.
Okay, so I think we hit everything that we wanted to talk about. We got the information on the AC. Lee Lu is going to get back to us about the infrastructure, but I think we pretty much have an idea there, and this timeline, which I think is most important. So when will we, we're meeting again next Monday. Are we going to, do we have time on Monday that we're going to discuss the project again? Because I would encourage, you know, I know August is such a difficult month, especially these last couple of weeks, and the August is a big, very big vacation time, but it is a good opportunity for any public input. We are discussing things, primarily the air conditioning, which was not in a whole year's time discussed, and it would be really valuable, I think, to hear back from the community as to what the community values and what they, you know, would like to see happen with our schools. So, you know, we'll, we'll have some more opportunity on the 28th. We are meeting twice in September. So we will be meeting another, I believe, three times before the October 2nd meeting. So we should still be able to, you know, keep this dialogue going. I think we're pretty much close to making some decisions here and really tightening it up, but I do think that that community input is, is very valuable at this time. And, you know, we do want to hear from you, and if you want to send us an email, you want to call in, you, you know, anything to really get, you know, get, get your opinions to us. The other thing I would like to say, you know, and Allison and Cynthia touched on it, it is really so important to understand what the needs are of the school as it currently stands. Whether we have an increased enrollment or we don't have an increased enrollment, it was really very valuable for the board. I know when we did our tour of the schools last year, we will be doing it again in September with our new board members. And it's, it's really, we have to look beyond this year and next year. We have done such a great job here over the past few years. We are attracting so many new families, and when they come to us, you know, we don't want to disappoint. We want to be able to deliver on what attracted them here to Tocco. So really, what's on this list are things that we currently need and will need. They're not going away. We just talked earlier tonight when we did the appointments about a new, another new class that we've added. That class needs space. Rob brought up a very good point. There's probably a good chance that there will be another class next year for these same students. So we need to be looking ahead, and we don't want to kind of underscore that, we need to really look the long term of what the needs are. And, and I think that, you know, anyone who, I don't spend a dollar of this school's money that I, you know, I, I look at it like it's my money. I mean, you guys don't know me so well, many people in the community do. It's, you know, this is, this is what we need, and I think we need to communicate that more. I think that's got to, you know, that's, that message has to get out there, and, you know, I think we, we have, you know, a job to do, doing that, and making sure that our community, our school parents, you know, our entire community. This is not just for the students of the school. This is, this is for our community, and, and, you know, the values of our property, there's a lot at stake here. So I, we really, we really have to get this right. Anybody else have anything to add?
Nope, I'm good. I think you, I think you're right. You're spot on, and we talked about that a lot over the last year. This, and I, I feel for the people. I have no children in Cottle any longer either, but I still believe what's on this paper here is in the best interest of the homeowners and the children and the people that come down the road. And it's difficult, but I, I think we have an obligation as board members to do what's right for the community, not just the current students. So, and I mean, you talked about that a little bit over the last year as well. So it's important, but we do need their feedback.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And it's helpful to get their feedback before we make a final decision, not when they go to the voting booth.
Well, that's, absolutely.
So I hope people come out. I hope maybe we can create another email, we can circulate that email again, Blackboard Connect with questions or thoughts where maybe we can get some feedback. I know it's quiet now, but we are running into a busy season where parents are engaged, and we should take advantage of it.
If we send that, that email with the attachment of this presentation, let the, let the public know where we are right now, I think that would be really beneficial. So they could see, you know, that this has been, we have been working on it over the summer. We have spent a lot of time talking about it, but we, we do need to hear back from our community because we are going to need the buy-in to get this done. And that's it.
Good.
All right. So when will we see Russ and Walter again? Not next week, right?
No, I think, I think...
You are well done.
We love having them here, but, but I think, I think we probably should do some more discussions. Peter will join us.
Right, our September workshop, probably.
I'm sure he's home following along, and, and then I'll reach out, maybe September, we, we have September 18th and definitely October 2nd, if you gentlemen could hold those dates for us.
What, what exactly is the environmental assessment form? That's something that you guys are submitting, or what exactly is that?
You've actually already circulated it with your intent to be lead agent, so we're just going to finalize that. There's no real issues environmentally, but you do have to complete the State Environmental Quality Review Act process, the CECL process, and everything that you're proposing falls generally within what's called the routine activity of a school.
So you, so you don't expect us to have any kind of feedback or poor feedback?
Well, there's been none today. Everybody said, have at it, you're in charge. So all the, I believe all the involved agencies have already responded, which the only ones obligated to respond, and it's been circulated to interested agencies as well, which have not responded, which is typical. But that's really more of an administrative thing that you must complete in order to have the resolution for a bond referendum.
Yes, there's no obligation, just to be clear. So a week from tonight, we will have a resolution for that environmental assessment form, but we began this process back in, early in the summer at our meeting. Yes, it's moving along.
Okay, so I think we'll set for tonight. Thank you both for being here tonight and answering all our questions. And we will see everybody next Monday night, the August 28th, 7:30.
Thank you.
Thanks, Walter. Russ, thank you.